Good evening, everyone. Welcome to Saco City Hall for tonight's Planning Board Meeting. We have one workshop item this evening regarding Chapter 230, Article 12. Emily, have at it.
Thank you, everyone. So I put this into the Planning Board's packet just more as informational so you know what council is looking at. It is an initiative brought forward by Public Works and planning staff to make sure that we are in compliance with our MS4 requirements. MS4 permit is a countywide permit that covers Saco, and it has to do with stormwater permitting provisions, like what we regulate when we go through site plan review processes and you see Joe's sign off. So during the ordinance revision process, there were a few things that now looking back on it could be strengthened. So what we see here, Article 12, we added some references to make it clear we're referencing Chapter 230-1202, 1204, 1203. We added information that ties this section of the ordinance better back to the Technical Design and Construction Standards Manual, which the Board and City Council wound up adopting in 2021. We will also be bringing forward some updates in the future to the Technical Design Construction Standards Manual to reference back to this as well more cleanly. And then we also included in here provisions for, the main reason for this change were provisions for the 60-day period to come into compliance and language around what would happen if someone's not in compliance. We brought this forward to City Council as a new business item. It's going back as a first reading item on September 11th. We will be asking the City Council to forward it to you folks for a Planning Board report following Section 230-1701 amendment process to make sure that we follow the correct processes laid out in ordinance. And then from there, in the future, you will also see Low Impact Development Standards Ordinance that is under development. We've been talking with the Conservation Commission about that, as well as Long Range Planning Committee, so there'll be more work on that. The county permit, as a result of the county permit and some other provisions, the city, as well as other York County communities will have been required to do low-impact development standards review within their ordinances. So we'll have more conversations around stormwater and low-impact development, but this is just a requested revision to put us into compliance with the MS4 requirements. So I'd be happy to take any questions, but again, the Board will have an opportunity to review this and hold a full public hearing process, just like we did for the LD 2003 revisions.
Great, thank you, Emily. Board members, any questions or thoughts for Emily at this time?
I said the changes are pretty minimal by the looks of it. All the changes are in red, correct?
Yes, red and underlined.
Great. All right, thank you, Emily. I guess we'll look forward to the next rendition.
Thank you.
All right, well, with that, we will begin our regularly scheduled meeting. It's 5:37 PM, and we'll call to order the Tuesday, September 5th, Saco Planning Board Meeting. With us this evening, we have our Counselor Liaison, Joe Gunn, myself, Matt Prevenzal, the Vice Chair, I'll be Acting Chair this evening, to my left, Joyce Larry Clark, Rob Biggs, Glenn Schratt, and to my right, Jeffrey Grossman and Matt DeChiani, along with Lisa Harmon and Emily Cole Pressett, our staff for the Planning Board. Our first item of business is the approval of the August 15th meeting minutes and the August 9th site walk notes. Do the Board members have any comments, concerns, questions, or edits on those items?
I move to approve the August 15th minutes and the August 9th site walk notes as presented.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Joyce. Was that Rob the second? Sorry. Thank you, Rob. You're very deep this evening.
We had this problem last meeting when you weren't here, between Glenn and I, so I had to lower my voice.
I see. Thank you. Motion made and seconded to adopt the minutes as written and presented. Any discussion? Those in favor, Matt?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Joyce?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Glenn?
Yes.
I vote yes as well. Motion to approve the minutes. Our next item of business this evening is the Planning Board meeting schedule for the remainder of the year. Emily, anything specific you want to address?
We just thought it was a good opportunity to go through the dates for the rest of the year with Thanksgiving and Christmas and holidays coming up to see if there's any conflicts, anything that we should kind of move now or reschedule now. One request that we have here is to move October 3rd meeting to October 5th to make sure we have quorum and to handle scheduling conflict. The other thing is to add a potential date for October 24th to our October meeting schedule just to accommodate workload.
Board members, any concerns or conflicts?
So, to clarify, October, we'd have meetings on the 5th, the 17th, and the 24th?
Yes, and the 24th would be tentative.
All of those dates work for me.
I don't think I'll be able to attend on October 5th.
Sorry, Matt, I didn't catch that.
October 5th is not a good date for me.
Okay, you have a conflict on the 5th.
Yeah, I have a conflict on the 5th.
And that's the adjustment that's, okay, Thursday, yes, we say it there. All right, perfect. Any other conflicts for Board members? No?
I'm fine.
All right, so otherwise, Emily, I think we're in good shape.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. Our next item on the agenda this evening, item number four, is LD 2003 Proposed Housing Ordinance Revisions. This is to Chapter 230 of Saco's Code of Ordinances. I believe Emily has a few updates there, and it's been to council for the first reading, I believe.
Yes, this was, this item, we were, the Planning Board considered this item at the last meeting and held a public hearing, heard from residents, this was at the August 15th meeting, and then closed the hearing and continued the item to this meeting. The Planning Board is asked at this meeting to finish up their report. Staff has provided an update to the memo from August 15th. You can get links to the PowerPoint that we provided, as well as the revision materials. We also included in this meeting packet the crosswalk so that you can see each section that was changed, why it was changed, what the regulatory provision or recommendation was about. The other item included in your packet this evening is a template for a report back to City Council. So the way that the ordinance is worded is the City Council asked the Planning Board to hold its public hearing in accordance with statutory provisions, and then to provide a report back to City Council on the recommended updates. So there are a couple blanks at the end of this report where we're just asking the Board to provide any feedback to council that you would like to provide. I'm happy to just give an overview of the PowerPoint at the last meeting. I know there were some questions from City Councilors that the Board was specifically asked to look at, so if it's helpful, I can bring those up.
I think it'd be worth a few minutes, yes.
So this was the slide specific to requests for feedback from the council. I don't know if I need to walk through the whole presentation, but I'm happy to do that if it would be helpful.
I don't think the whole presentation's necessary, but I think this slide is a good refresher for Board members. So, Board members, with that, these few items here, and we have a nice table that Emily and Lisa put together, are there any initial questions or we want to jump into the feedback that City Council's looking for? Excuse me, thoughts in the air. I guess, so the, so if we take that first topic here, the general business, Saco Island Zone and affordable housing, where does, any thoughts on that from Board members if we take them sort of one piece at a time here?
I think the question was whether affordable housing development use would be a permitted use in those zones?
Sure.
Which I believe is proposed on the table that we had from August 15th. But I think we, as I recall, we were generally in favor of affordable housing development as being a permitted use in those zones.
Right, so that, Emily, is that on your table here? Is that the first item here?
Just to make sure we're all looking at the same table? Are you talking about the table that, okay.
Sorry, the one that was in this packet here? Yes.
And for people following along, this is in the meeting packet available online. Yes, affordable housing development, I believe, according to this, is in those districts as drafted, but we can pull up the drafts as well, just to be sure.
Yeah, I was looking at Table 3-3 in the August 15th meeting minutes.
So the note within, within here talks about medium-density residential, high-density, downtown, general business. Is that, do we still have Saco Island part of that? I don't have all the nomenclature in front of me, but...
It's not listed in Table 3-3. Saco Island's not listed as allowing affordable housing developments as a permitted use.
And that was sort of the specific question from City Council that we were, we were generally in favor of that, or would support that. But that's, so that's sort of the clarity is, do we want to see that? As you noted, it's missing. Is that something we do want to see in there?
Yes, that was a question, and I think GB, maybe we had just covered in our recommendation as staff, but it should, the question was relative to, do we want to also include it in Saco Island?
So I guess I agree with you, Joyce. I thought that's, I thought we were generally in favor of that as well, so I don't, does anyone have any, Glenn, any additional thoughts there?
No, I'm in total agreement with that.
Yeah.
It should be included as well.
Yeah. Any other Board members?
I mean, it's designed for high-density housing. There already is high-density housing.
Right. Yep. So, yes, Emily, I think we're, I think the Board's in favor of adding Saco Island to that table as well.
Okay, I'll just make some notes here, and then we'll compile it at the end.
Okay, fantastic. Could you bring up your slide again? I wish I had a snapshot of it. So then, similarly, Portland Road, Saco Island for ADUs. We just spoke about the affordable housing. But then how do the ADUs fall into that category as well?
I believe the question, and I could be wrong, but I believe the question specifically was how would ADUs fall into Portland Road zoning where there are already existing homes? And then Saco Island zoning if there were existing homes? With Saco Island being developed the way that it is, I don't know that it would be qualifying for accessory dwelling units, but I don't think there's any harm in including it as a permitted, or even as a permitted use in either zone.
Yeah, the way that Saco Island's being developed, I don't see, there wouldn't be room for an ADU kind of situation.
Right.
No single-family homes, no lots that were the appropriate size. They're looking at apartments on the east side, the west side has pretty much already been developed and, or redeveloped. And then, so I think, I don't know why you, I don't think you need to include it just because, or because there's no chance that it would ever happen anyway.
I agree. I think it should be included, whether there's a chance or not. I mean, someone with deep pockets could buy a few structures, work them out, and start all over again. So there's always that possibility.
Joyce, thoughts?
I, yeah, I mean, I guess I agree with Rob that it just doesn't seem like ADUs would be possible on Saco Island. Portland Road, you know, I mean, I guess if, if a property met the dimensional standards otherwise, then I don't, I don't see why an existing home on, in the Portland Road District couldn't also be eligible to add an ADU.
Yep.
I was gonna say, I agree with Glenn. I mean, you kind of need to future-proof it, is what I'm thinking, in the event that something could happen 20, 30 years down the road. I think it's, probably should include it for that reason. You know, that's not a thing short-term, let's think long-term with that sort of development. You never know, right? You never, never know.
Sure, yeah. So maybe a little conservatively, but no real, no harm in...
It's not going to affect, I mean, if it's just a statement, right, it really, isn't it really going to affect anything at this moment or this juncture? So why not put it in there for future-proof, to future-proof it for later generations?
We've had that conversation as well, that Portland Road is pretty, it's pretty deep into Portland Road as well. So, I mean, that's, that allows the flexibility in there, so...
And some of those deep lots are very large.
Sure, yep. Okay, does that answer your question, then?
There was a last question there where Counselor Hatch had submitted his suggestion that affordable housing development would be included as a permitted use in the LDR. And then he also was looking at the multi-residential projects would be conditional use in the LDR.
So if we could just, before we go on to that one, I just want to make sure that I have this clear on my end, that we are adding ADUs in Portland Road as well as Saco Island. The only thing that we should check with Saco Island is if current single-family homes are permitted, because otherwise you wouldn't be able to have an accessory two. So right now, in Saco Island, you cannot have single-family dwellings. You can have multi-units as part of a residential project. So that's just something for the Board to be aware of.
So I guess it's kind of a moot point, then? If you can't have a...
So if you add ADUs to Saco Island issues, or Saco Island, you should be adding or modifying the single-family home option?
Yeah, you should be modifying whatever the primary use is going to be, because there'd be no primary use.
Right. So again, to Glenn's point, I guess if somebody were to go in and buy a large chunk of that development and tear it down and put up a big residential house, they could, if we have it, so they could do that. Right now, they could not put a single-family home.
Right, so then there would be no primary use for, do they have accessory two?
So I guess, Rob, are you...
So you have to fix both? If you're gonna do the ADU to Saco Island, you have to go back and revise the residential to allow for a single-family home.
And I just also recommend that we take a look at the comp plan, too, to see what it says about Saco Island, because I think all along, it's, it's been like a master plan situation or a multifamily situation.
Yeah, I think the intent for Saco Island was higher-density development versus single-family homes. It was predominantly, I mean, obviously, the west side is, you'd have to have some pretty deep pockets to buy a massive, currently quite profitable apartment complex to put up a single-family home. And then the encouragement was for the east side of the island to be developed in a more dense fashion than having a one or two single-family, four single-family homes there, which I think at one point, way back, there was a development that was kind of looking at doing four, five, six homes there. And the comp plan obviously does suggest that where we have infrastructure, density should follow.
Yeah, personally, I don't want to go down that road of allowing single-family on Saco Island. So I wouldn't be in favor of single-family or ADUs.
But while we are talking, oh, if I can, Mr. Chair, about Saco Island, it might be good to look at affordable housing, multifamily uses, because it looks like they're all blank right now.
Which is odd, because there are multifamily dwellings on Saco Island. I said that's a little odd since we know there are multifamily dwellings on Saco Island. Sounds like that needs to be updated, too.
Yes, so I, I agree with Joyce. I think if we started to go back, the single-family back in Saco Island is kind of going backwards a little bit, but I agree with Rob. Obviously, we can't have ADUs if we don't have single families, so to Emily's point, Rob's as well with the comp plan, that's, it seems appropriate that we add affordable housing to Saco Island and then ADUs back into Portland Road, and I think that seems to be what we're circling around. Does that make sense? Is that what we've...
But also the multifamily residential projects up to, and more than eight units right now, Table 3-3 on the August 15th minutes, doesn't include that as a permitted use?
Correct, those, yes, those three items there, yes. Emily, are there any other multifamily headings under that? Okay, that's where we get into single family. All right, perfect. Did that answer all the questions?
Yes, thank you. Just to summarize what I have so far is to add affordable housing development as permitted in SI, add ADUs in Portland Road as permitted, and then add multifamily uses, more than eight and fewer than eight as P in SI.
Yes. Okay, additionally, any other thoughts or comments on, on this one here in LD 2003?
But the last one?
Yeah.
Adding affordable housing?
Oh, yes.
Yeah, adding affordable housing development to as a permitted use in the LDR. In multi-residential projects, up to eight units per building would be a conditional in the LDR, is what the suggestion came from Counselor Hatch.
What are the Board's thoughts on, on this one here?
I'm fine with those, those two changes.
I mean, definitely as a conditional as opposed to permitted, just because of the traffic issue where Beach Street Ferry Road is really the only artery servicing that zone, so there's certainly quite a potential for traffic issues unless something changes.
I agree. There's, there's a lot, there's a lot that would have to go into it, a lot to be reviewed, traffic being one of them. Traffic's always a good topic of discussion, so I could support in a conditional fashion in a particular area. I don't think it's necessarily, could work in every, every portion of the zone, but opportunity, I think opportunity's okay, so... Any other?
I'm good with that recommendation as well.
Jen, Glenn, excuse me, Matt, Jeff, any other thoughts?
So you're suggesting for both the affordable housing development in the LDR, as well as the multi-residential project in the LDR, would be conditional on each one?
Conditional, correct.
Yeah, okay. I'm fine with that.
Mr. Chair, did we want to look at the zoning map and anything from the comp plan while we're doing this?
That was gonna be my next question, is, yeah, could we look at a map, exactly? And I guess back to specifics, it's, it's three to eight units. Or are we saying all multifamily?
So the way that affordable housing development definition is written right now, it will not be limited to eight units. So the, the question is whether or not to allow affordable housing development in the LDR, which will be 2.5 times the base density of the zone, provided that the developer meets the requirements from the definition. And then whether or not we wanted to allow multifamily units up to eight units. So the LDR is everything in the lighter yellow colors.
Okay, that was, so that was the multifamily, not more than eight, but up to eight. That was the piece I wanted to clarify.
Right, but the question is also, should we add affordable housing developments? And affordable housing developments as a definition are not going to be limited to eight units, the way they're in right now.
Correct. Correct, but if it were a multifamily and not affordable, it would be limited to eight?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
And that's eight units per building. So someone could put, if there was enough land, somebody could put eight units in different buildings. So someone could put, if there was enough land, somebody could put eight units in different buildings on the same site.
If it met the density per the land area?
Yes.
Correct.
And can you pull up the comp plan? I mean, I assume where there's public water and sewer, there's potential for growth.
So I can give a bit of background if it's helpful, because I've actually received a lot of questions about LDR and multi-family. Um, and maybe we should look at current zoning, so what staff did was we recommended the, the minimal to comply with LD two thousand and three, so that's where we got to with what we have. Um, as far as the, um, um, the recommendations, the growth areas, um, are shown for limited growth areas, and those areas, you can get two units in what we're, what we have on our zoning as growth areas, you could do two units for the proposal, up to three if you have an existing home. Growth areas then become four in dwelling units permitted by right, so it would seem like what we could do, um, another option, which hasn't come up yet really, is to include LDR as a growth area as it's shown on this table, so you would be allowing dwelling units by right for up to four units. Um, and then there is no requirement to have, to allow or require affordable housing developments in that zone. You certainly can, if you want to as a board, to increase affordability. We always want to look for options to do that. Um, but there is no requirement to do that. According to our wor, uh, review of the laws, you have to allow affordable housing developments as a use where multi-family uses are already allowed in your zoning. So there's just kind of an, an, an in-between option as well.
Emily, can we, can we add to this that in, that these uses in this zone would be limited to sewered lots only and exclude unsewered lots? Is that something that we can do, or?
Um, for the dwelling units permitted by right? Or for, if you were to allow, like, multi-family developments and affordable housing developments?
Correct.
So affordable housing and multi-family developments will require sewer, sewer connection in Saco? We already require that. Um, dwelling units permitted by right, um, the use that we're recommending to comply with the more than one single-family home on a lot provision of the law. Um, where you can use a septic system, provided you have enough space and you can prove, prove capacity. But you, in those cases, you'd be limited to four units.
Okay, so you've confirmed, I guess for me, my question was, yes, in, in the LDR and that, the last question from Counselor Hatch, with the, with any multi-family or affordable, it's gonna require a sewer connection anyway. Okay, so that was, that was my big concern. Okay. Reviewing these maps and these latest notes that Emily made is, anybody have any additional thoughts? Concerns? Everyone still supports affordable housing and then multi-family up to eight to be added?
As conditional.
As conditional use to LDR, yep.
I'm good with that.
Yep. Okay, Emily, it looks like the board is in agreement.
So affordable housing developments would become permitted, but L, uh, multi-family would become conditional?
I think we're, I think conditional for both.
Yeah, conditional.
Can we?
Okay, I'm not a hundred percent clear that we can have a conditional situation with affordability, but we can, we can recommend it, and I can do some research.
If we're not permitted by law, then we would have to have it as permitted, so. I guess if you, um, so you, are you sure that, at this point, that it's by law, we can't say affordable's conditional?
I am pretty sure as a use, you have to choose one path or the other. You can't have, you have permitted or not.
Oh, tying the two, affordable as well as the multi-family together. You can't have, um, well, no, we s, we are saying conditional on one, on the multi-family. And we can do that, but affordable housing, you're saying we probably can't?
I, I think the state wants us to choose permitted or not permitted.
Okay.
But, um, you can make the recommendation. I could do research on it and report to council.
Recommend it as, um, conditional unless we have to by law make it permitted, and then we would do that, right?
Yeah, I think that's a starting point.
Yeah, I mean, if the, if the state says you have to make it permitted, then we have to make it permitted, there's.
Well, it sounds like the state's saying permitted or not permitted, but
Or affordable. Yeah, we can't make affordable conditional is what Emily's saying.
So we could decide that we don't want affordable to be a permitted use.
So I would suggest that.
Then none at all.
Suggest at this point that we say conditional unless we are required by the state for it to be permitted or not permitted, and in that case, make it permitted. Would be my suggestion.
Sure, that's a, that's a lot. Well, I think it seems like, Emily, please correct me, but if multi-family is allowed, then the state says affordable must also be allowed. Is that right? Is that?
Yes, that's correct.
So that's where, I guess I was thinking as part of the conversation, maybe Rob as well, that if it were conditional, then it would seem appropriate that affordable could be conditional as well. And that's, that's the clarity that we're looking for.
Right, that's what I'd have to do some research on.
So that's. And if we can't have a conditional, I mean, if the underlying zone is conditional. Makes sense to me, but that doesn't mean it's, correct, it doesn't mean it makes sense to the state.
So I don't know if it helps the board at all, but we as staff also use these descriptions from the comp plan. We thought they were really important to look at, and so we heavily relied on the descriptions of in-town low-density, in-town medium-density, downtown, et cetera, um, from the comp plan, and they correspond to this, this map here.
And so at this point, we're good with every other change that we've got on this spreadsheet?
Yes.
And the only one that we're questioning is the affordable housing development, whether it's permitted or not permitted. We have to pick one or the other. But on the multi-family residential, Emily, can we make that conditional, or is that a permitted or not permitted as well?
Um, multi-family residential, uh, can be a permitted or conditional use.
Okay.
There's no state law requirement attached to that.
Well, then if the state law requires us to be permitted on affordable housing development in the LDR, then that's what we do? And then we make it conditional with regards to multi-family residential projects?
So there's no requ, just to be clear, though, there's, because I know this is a little confusing, the law of the three components of it, but there's no requirement to have affordable housing developments as a use in the low-density residential. This is just a question from council.
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah, and the comp plan doesn't seem to anticipate a lot of development in LDR, or certainly in intensive development. So I don't, I don't, I wouldn't agree with, oh, well, we'll just make it a permitted use.
I agree too.
If we're in an either-or, I, I'd, I'd vote to not permit it. Because I don't think that's, I don't think that's what we had in mind when we adopted the comp plan.
Jeff, yeah? So multi-family is not allowed in low-density right now?
I'll pull up that right now for you, Jeff.
Yeah, correct, Jeff. Low-density residential does not allow multi-family.
This is currently what's allowed in, in LDR. This is the column where my cursor is. So, um, single-family, two-family, and then we will be adding the dwelling unit, we're recommending adding dwelling units permitted by right, because the state law will, um, that's to cover the additional units that people can have on their property if they have enough square footage.
But, but we can recommend to the council to either allow affordable housing in the low-density area or not, right?
That's the question, if you wanted to add it as a use to that table. The other option is you could recommend another use. I mean, you have several options. You could say we're recommending that, um, LDR be included as a, a growth area, so you can have up to four dwelling units per lot. You can say, we want to add another use to affordable housing developments. Maybe you want to limit the number. I'd have to do a little research to make sure the state law allows for that, because I think once you go into the state law definition, you have to be able to allow two-point-five times the base density of the zone. So you, you have options.
So if you allowed it as a growth area, that would allow up to four units per lot?
Yes.
But not eight?
Four units per lot, and then you would, um, there'd be no affordability component. It would just be to add units to the, to the lots, and you'd still have to meet the minimum lot area, like in any other zone.
Okay, so in order to have an affordability component, you have to allow up to eight units?
Uh, we would have to allow affordable housing development as a use.
Okay. Yeah, I guess I'd be in favor of adding that as a use to, to that district.
So I think, I guess, so Joyce, your concern is just a flat-out permitted for both. Rob, you're saying it's, it's okay if, if, except, or, um, if affordable must be allowed when multi-family's allowed, then, then that's okay and that's appropriate. Jeff, it seems you support that as well.
I do.
I guess. I, I guess I'm thinking of it as a conditional use for the multi-family and affordable in a potential instance of an area that maybe is undeveloped, for example. One concern I have is, let's say a, a house right on Ferry Road that needs some love, changes hands, and then next thing you know, there's an eight-plus unit, multi-family dwelling right on Ferry Road. That's, I don't think that's the intent of the comp plan and I don't know, that, that's, that's sort of my, that's my concern, sort of a potential scenario, if it were, I don't know, just sort of thinking aloud here, but that's, that, I mean, in, in theory, if it's, if it's a permitted use for multi-family and affordable, that is permitted and we can see that, we can see an option like that. Is that correct?
But you were suggesting, um, at one point, to have it as conditional use?
Sure.
Right, yeah, no, I would agree with that. That's what I was sort of saying, was conditional. Actually, I originally said conditional for both.
Yeah.
But the state apparently says either yes or no for the affordable piece of it, the verbiage. But again, in order to be affordable, it would probably have to be multi-family, and that's a conditional, so there's your catch there.
Yeah, exactly. So I guess for me, sort of question still, I, if it's conditional, if we can have them both conditional, I, I could.
That's fine. And if you can't have the affordable as conditional, then have it as permitted.
Right, and if it has to be permitted.
But you have the multi-family residential as being conditional, and that's your catch there.
Yeah, and that's, that's the other question, is that, can that, is that still appropriate? That, can that happen? Can multi-family be conditional with affordable being permitted? Does that?
In the low-density.
Correct.
Yeah, I would, I would think that's true. Is it not, Emily?
Uh, yes, that's true. So what you'll essentially be doing is, you'll have conditional market rate units, but for affordable, you will not have a regulator on the number of units on the site, other than the size of the lot.
Yeah, all right, so.
But what we're doing is doing a report to the council, right, or a recommendation to the council, so can't we report back to the council that there's a split on the board as to whether these uses should be permitted or conditional?
Um, I think you should probably vote and make sure there's a split, but probably want to get one recommend, if we can, get to the point of one recommendation from the board if it's possible. Might not be possible.
Jeff?
Yeah, I, I guess, I don't really see what's wrong if you had eight units on Ferry Road. I guess that was my first question. I mean, really, what's the issue?
Uh, yeah, um, I think that it's, it's a pretty, it, it starts to be the complete opposite of what the, of what the comp plan is, seems to be saying. I mean, right, areas to enhance residential neighborhood, minimal change anticipated, some growth, small increments. Not intended to accommodate any significant porter, uh, portion of demand. I don't think there's any precedent down there for.
But I think there's some large lots down there that you could have eight units, and you probably wouldn't even notice them.
Sure, so that's, I guess that's for me where the conditional component comes.
But I guess, from what I'm understanding, Emily's saying either it's permitted or it's not permitted. We can't do it conditional. Is that right? Affordable housing.
So right now, affordable housing, the board, I said, could recommend a conditional. I just have to do some research to see if the state law fully allows for that. I thought the state really wanted you to come down as either permitted or not permitted. As far as eight units, it could, it's eight units per building. So if you had the lot size, somebody could do multiple units, just keeping it to eight units in each building.
So what size lot would you need for eight units?
I'd have to, I'd have to look, Jeff, on the, on the dimensional standards table, and if you go into affordable housing, it'll be two-point-five times that allowable.
Yeah.
Emily, would you mind pulling up table three-dash-three again for us, so we can look at the potential changes there? So, yeah, can you, right there? So I guess you're, you're answering my question I was going to ask is, in the medium-density residential, where we currently have multi-family as conditional, we have, we have a conditional in a few items, in a few zones. Affordable is just permitted, and that's, that's where you're coming from there, so. We already have conditions, I guess, to your point, Rob, we have, we have multi-family allowed as conditional in some zones, and affordable permitted in the same zone, so.
But, but if you go permitted, then you don't have any control over what could be dependent on, if, if they have a large lot. You could do, a significant-sized lot could put multiple affordable housing development. You could do, a significant-sized lot could put multiple affordable housing development in.
Sure.
Yeah, and I'm thinking that, yeah, I would tend to go with no and conditional, myself.
Emily, do you have an opinion?
My opinion all along has been, we will provide you with the minimum amount required to comply. I think reading the comp plan, from what I've read, it seems like certain areas of the zone want to grow more slowly than others. So staff took what we thought was the minimum that you would need to comply with LD 2003, and that's what we've provided.
Okay, so I think back to our original thought was to recommend to council that they're conditional in both zones. Is that sort of the first step we want to take and provide a recommendation and get further feedback? Or do we want to adjust that?
I think the city's talking about affordable housing and keeping a line under affordable. If you all of a sudden make that conditional, in my mind, all of a sudden it's not affordable, because we're attaching conditions to it. So I'm still in favor of just allowing affordable housing with no conditions. And let the standards of the district be its own conditions.
Okay. Any other thoughts? Sounded, Jeff, that's something you would support too, permitted.
What we're supporting at this point, what went on?
Sure, the, right, so adding, it started with adding multifamily up to eight and affordable as both conditional uses to low-density. And I think that's where your thought was, well, it's, let's just make it permitted. What's wrong with making it permitted? Don't mess with the conditional, just permit it. So I think that's what, Glenn, you're saying as well.
Is that what Glenn's saying?
That's exactly correct.
Yeah, so Glenn.
So multifamily would be conditional and affordable would be permitted.
Permitted for both, yeah.
Okay, yeah, I'd be in support of that.
Yeah, I think that's.
So somebody needs to make a motion for a vote. Would they not, I mean, you want to vote on this?
Yeah, we can, as sort of informal straw poll.
Straw poll. Gives you something to go to council with.
Sure isn't, yeah, it's not always my favorite. And then Joyce, you had thoughts, maybe concerned about going flat-out permitted as well?
Right, yeah, because of the 2.5 percent. Yeah, I mean, I'd be in favor of multifamily residential up to eight as conditional, but not affordable. Not, affordable is conditional, but not permitted. So if it's a black and white, has to be permitted or not, I'd go with not.
Okay. Yeah, Matt, you, okay, you agree with Joyce. And then, I guess, one last question, perhaps, maybe asking it a little different way. Affordable, we must allow affordable when multifamily is allowed. Is that specific to conditional or not? I know in our table, we had a few items that is conditional and affordable was allowed. If we look at that, there's quite a few zones. We had, what, medium-density, high-density. What do we have, downtown, general business? I think we had, yeah, so there's quite a few zones in there that we're allowing affordable, that we're making the adjustment. So it's, do we want to add it to low-density as well? So I guess, again, just maybe asking it a different way. Does conditional in our zone matter for the affordable? Or is that sort of something that we're just adding in? Just because it's conditional, do we have to, does that fall in the category that we have to allow affordable?
My understanding is if you allow multifamilies as conditional or permitted, then you would then be allowing affordable housing automatically per the state law.
Okay.
That's the direction that I read when I read the documents.
Okay, that's, thank you.
What she said is perfect.
Yeah.
So if we allow multifamily in the LDR as a conditional use, then affordable housing is automatically allowed?
That's Emily's, yeah.
It'd be my recommendation that then affordable housing becomes permitted.
Okay.
Perfect.
Okay, do we, is there an official motion that we want to make, so we give Emily official direction?
Is this going in a minutes, or are we just doing a unofficial?
You're doing an unofficial recommendation, but I'd go person by person and see what they say.
Yeah, I think that's fine.
I'll start. I would say no and no. For both.
No and no, okay.
That's my opinion. I feel that people that live in an LDR are not anticipating large eight-plus unit projects in their neighborhood. If they wanted that, they would live in the MDR.
Okay.
So.
Thank you.
Just my opinion, no and no.
Glenn?
And I'm saying conditional on the multi-unit, but the affordable housing is permitted without conditions.
Okay.
Basically, exactly what Emily's already worded.
Sure. And Emily, that would mimic MDR. Okay.
Well, what Emily had in table 3-3 was not permitted, that neither of them would be permitted in LDR.
Sure, so that's.
That's the proposal that we're talking about adding.
Sure, yeah, so that's perfect to make it official, so. Rob agrees with the proposal before us, or the recommendation before us. Glenn would like to see, Glenn would support permitted for affordable, conditional for multifamily up to eight.
That's correct.
And that's.
And I was not permitted for affordable and not permitted for multifamily in the LDR.
Correct, correct, yeah. Okay, let's just keep going down the line, Joyce.
I mean, if I have to make a choice, I'm saying no and no.
Okay. Thank you. Jeff?
I agree with Glenn.
Okay.
No and no.
Matt, no and no. And I guess, Emily, I'm the odd man out. I could see it as conditional. But I, I'm not, I don't think a flat-out permitted. I guess I'm not supporting permitted straight out, so I guess that's. I guess that's my thought. Does that help, so?
So you get to go to council with a confused.
Motion failed.
Yeah, motion failed, I guess, but it's not an official motion.
So I guess the recommendation to council would be as you've presented it this evening. Does that make sense?
So.
Why would that be the recommendation?
All right, so what I have here, and the board is asked to make a report. So in your packets, we gave you a draft template to fill out. So we're asking you to fill out the conclusion section of page three in the LD 2003 meeting packet. And then we're also asking you to look at the language in that memo, because this is going to come from you to city council, and make sure that you are in agreement with it. And if you're not in agreement, change anything on that memo. So there's that piece of this. So I'll give you a minute to read that, and then, Mr. Chair, maybe I'll summarize what we've discussed so far.
That sounds good, thank you. So Emily, in the report that you, it's these five pages are five documents, correct? Okay.
Yes, that's correct.
So. So Emily, so item one, we spoke about in your slide, is you would agree that that would be appropriate there?
So I was thinking that item one would probably be the first recommendation, which is to add affordable housing development as permitted in Saco Island zone.
Okay, correct.
And then number two would be add accessory dwelling units in Portland Road District as permitted uses.
Okay, I agree.
And then I have number three would be to add multifamily uses as permitted uses in the Saco Island District. That almost could be included under number two, but. And then the last.
Sorry, could you say that last one again, use?
We should just renumber them, so Saco Island all goes together for the council. So it would be add affordable housing development as permitted in Saco Island District, which would be number one. Number two would be add multifamily uses as permitted uses in the Saco Island District. So that would include both more than eight and eight per building.
Okay.
And then number three would then be add accessory dwelling units as a permitted use in the Portland Road zoning district.
Okay.
And then number four, I have I have three that say do not add it, and I have three that say, I have three that say do not add it, affordable housing and multifamily housing. I have two that say to add permitted as affordable housing, permitted, add affordable housing uses permitted and multifamily, eight units per building as conditional. And then I have one that says add affordable housing development as conditional and multifamily, eight units per building as conditional.
Okay, so that, I agree, that was the discussion. Is that overly complicated as part of the report or our recommendation? Is that?
I mean, my recommendation is always that the board not send something tied. It's probably easier for council, but if you can't break the tie with discussion, then we forward it along.
I suggest we forward it along, and they're going to ask the city planner what her opinion is. And they'll probably go with the city planner's opinion. That's my opinion.
Well, we've had a lot of discussion on it, and I agree, we do like to try to simplify. I think our council liaison here this evening can explain, maybe in greater detail.
To Glenn's point, though, I mean, if we, if this report is sent as is to the council, we will clarify, again, what's actually permitted or what we have to do. By that time, obviously, city staff will have that answer, though. Her opinion in terms of what we should actually do, that's not her place to do. That's why we have you folks here. That being said, I think I can speak for the other council in the room by saying that being given a state mandate that supersedes or complicates our pre-existing comp plan and pre-existing zoning is a heavy load. We appreciate that, though. I mean, we're put in this position because of a mandate from Augusta. So I'm not the least bit surprised that the council, that the planning board would be deadlocked on this, though. And I wouldn't want to impose different opinions on different people, though, in this situation, especially since we have different opinions, excuse me, ourselves at the council, though. But at the same time, what Emily Colprescott just summarized based on your behalf, I'm pretty sure the council can, you know, muddle through that. And, you know, I would, I just simply hope that the council doesn't play, you know, ping pong by saying no, no, that, no, we go back to the planning board and come up with something. Now, I can assure you, at least one councillor that's yours truly will say, no, we're going to take this, and we can formulate our own opinion based on what you've said, though. Because it's not like you've all held your opinions back. On the contrary, you've discussed it pretty thoroughly, and we can sort of come to a consensus, I think, based on what you're saying. So I wouldn't want to come up the process by having to make it perfect, although I can understand staff wanting to have a full consensus. But if we're not going to get there, there's really no point in burning the midnight oil on it when we have the information out there. It's in the record. Any of us can look at it and be like, okay, this is what they were thinking. It'll inform our decision, or maybe not inform our decision. That's the best thing about the council. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe.
Matt, what question, if you had to choose affordable housing development is either yes or no, conditional's not allowed, say, which I think is probably what it's going to come back as, and you have to choose yes or no, which way do you go?
I think I have to say no. I think there's, I think the proposal before us and what Emily's provided us with the minimum is quite a bit. So I don't, I don't think it's necessary to include it in the LDR. I think there could be scenarios or areas, of course, not off the top of my head, but that a project like that may be successful. But I don't think I'm, with the amount of opportunity elsewhere, I don't think it's necessary to flat-out allow it everywhere in LDR.
So how do you want to take that, Emily? Like, you've got a three vote, and then a three vote, and then a. No, a three vote and a two vote, and then you've got a, depending on what the state says, vote.
I just think it's important that the board really look at this closely. We have a lot of residents who have written to me to have, you know, and to councillors to have comments included in the council's hearing process. So I just want to make sure that we take the time to review this, so that's really what I'm more concerned about. You can also look back on information that councillor Hatch provided that was in your public hearing packet, which we looked at last time. We can look a little bit more at the comp plan, but.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Why don't we just table the matter? We don't need to decide tonight, and the clock's ticking. We have other applicants here. And that will give the members of the planning board to further review what's on the table.
I would say that's a good suggestion, if I can, Mr. Chair. I just do want to alert everyone that we have, the council has scheduled their public hearing for September 11th. So they will be looking for your report during their hearing.
For when, what?
September 11th.
Oh, December, I think you said September.
September 11th, so Monday. And we've noticed that to the public.
So that's. So I guess we've talked about four items. I, I guess that would be, that seems to be the, the board's recommendation to council for those, those three items, and then I guess the fourth item, the board being split. I guess unfortunately, I guess that's.
I'd move to provide that report to the board, to the council. That we're in agreement on the first three items, or generally in agreement on the first three items, that we add affordable housing developments as a permitted use in Saco Island and multifamily uses as permitted in Saco Island, add ADUs as permitted Portland Road, and that there is a difference of opinion regarding adding multifamilies and affordable housing in LDR.
I'll, I'll second that.
Okay, Joyce made a motion, Jeff seconded. Any additional discussion? Those in favor? Matt?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Joyce?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Glenn?
Yes.
I vote yes as well.
Thank you, we'll write that up.
Thank you, Emily. Our next item on the agenda this evening, does the board need to do a short recess or would we like to continue? Continue. Next item on the agenda this evening is 321 Lincoln Street, Lincoln Village subdivision. This is a continued application of completeness review. This is a continuation from the previous meeting held on, where are we, August, August 15th?
Mr. Chair, I will abstain from further discussion on this matter.
All right, thank you, Glenn. Emily, would you like to give a brief update on the items that the board was looking for to continue this hearing or this review?
Sure, thank you. So on August 15th, the board started to review this. We also included the review history through preliminary review, where you can find the other meeting materials over the review period. We've updated the checklist of items as the items were fulfilled. So you'll see those on the page three of the meeting packet for this evening's Lincoln Village review. Some of the things that we've worked through over the last few weeks, you'll see a memo in the meeting packet from attorney, consulting attorney Phil Saucier, looking at the more detailed review of the Lincoln Village master declaration of covenants. We have also had a draft private sewer facilities maintenance agreement on the record now, stormwater facilities maintenance agreement, an access deed and drainage and access deed. There's a draft easement that was provided as well for future language that will be used in the review before any construction happens. Some other items that were worked through include the. TMP agreement was executed by the applicant, submitted to the city. City engineering review comments were fulfilled by the, the city engineer signed off on that. Construction sequencing plan, I believe that was updated for the last meeting. Landscaping peer review, we had some comments back and forth and now those have been addressed and we have those memos in the meeting packet as well. So the board tonight is asked to determine whether or not the application is complete for a final subdivision review. We've put here that the motion is there if the board does determine it's complete. And then if there is a completion determination, we will schedule the public hearing for a future meeting date. If it's not complete, then we recommend that the board inform the applicant of those missing items to make the application complete and continue that review to a future meeting date, so two options there.
All right, thank you, Emily. Board members, any questions from Emily after reviewing these additional items?
Emily, so as I recall, last meeting, when the applicant was asked if we would finish all these outstanding issues in the next two weeks by this meeting, it would be, it would happen. It appears as though there's still quite a few things that are just outstanding. I'm, I'm looking at one, two, six items that still have final review plans set or additional notes and comments required. Or am I looking at something wrong here?
So I'm referring to page three of the meeting packet.
Yeah, that's where I'm, where it says items required, in the blue, items required for preliminary subdivision review to be submitted. My. I'm, all right. Let me get.
So I do have some notes here, but those are just for clarity. But anywhere where there's a check, staff has looked at the item and said that we believe it is complete to start this final review process.
Okay. So just to summarize, then it looks like the applicant has, in your opinion, satisfied those remaining items?
Yes, from the last meeting.
Right, okay, understood, thank you.
So Mr. Chair, I move to find the final subdivision application complete.
Thank you, Joyce, for the motion.
I'll second.
Thank you, Rob, for the second. Any additional thoughts or concerns from the board?
Do you know when this hearing will be scheduled then, Emily?
So if the, if the vote passes, then it would be scheduled for the October 5th meeting. We will not make the notice period for September 19th.
Okay, and then that would be, that would be a public hearing meeting? Right, okay.
October 5th would be, yes.
Correct, yeah. Any other thoughts or concerns, questions from the board members? Not looking like.
I guess just a comment, I don't really think we should be at this point. You know, I think that during the preliminary process, that there were two instances where the applicant did not get a positive recommendation. So I don't think the plan should have gone forward. We continued to vote until they got a positive recommendation, so it went forward, but I don't think it should have. I don't think it was done correctly and I don't think we should be reviewing a checklist for a final subdivision review.
Okay. Thank you for those notes, Jeff. So Emily, these are, so again, these are application materials, documents. This is going to be material for additional deliberation and discussion by the board and further public comment during the public hearing process, correct?
Yes.
So that's, so we've had the preliminary portion and now we're, now we're into the, the final portion part of it. So there's sort of another, another round per se of discussion, finalization, refinement, if you will, to, to any of the items, plans, documents and everything, right? So there's additional, additional discussion review. It's not, we're not really done.
So this will be final subdivision review, so any item that falls under chapter 188 of the city's ordinances is what the planning board is asked to review and chapter 230 as it relates to subdivision.
Sure, and that's, that comes after this step here. This step is for receipt of the documents, making sure we're ready to move into that deliberation portion.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
So I'm in agreement that the application is complete, but I don't feel the traffic, the TMP has done enough to provide enough traffic calming measures, but I know that's for a later discussion, I just want to put it out there today.
Okay, all right, that's okay.
But I do agree it's complete, the documents have been submitted and it's complete, but I, I think that's something that I needed to say.
Sure, so we're, we have the appropriate documents, information to continue the discussions and deliberations and review.
Yep, I agree with that. I agree with that part.
Okay. Rob, did you have a?
Yeah, I'm just, so what we're voting on, yea or nay, is that the application documents are in to create a final application.
Correct.
Not whether you like it or not, or whatever.
Correct, yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Motion made by Joyce, seconded by Rob, to find the application complete. Those in favor, Matt?
Yes.
Rob? Uh, excuse me.
Jeff?
Jeff?
No.
Joyce?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
I vote yes myself, so that's four to one, one, two, three, four to one in favor. So, thank you, Emily, this is, as you said, tentatively for October 5th. And that would be public hearing and notices will go out in the appropriate timeframe.
That's correct, yes.
All right, thank you. All right, our, our next item on the agenda this evening is Amari Springs subdivision. It is a continued application review for a preliminary subdivision of 25 lots at 50 and 52 Jenkins Road. That 59 lots five and six. Emily, if you would, a brief update, of course.
Uh, yes, so at the last meeting, there was discussion on the sidewalk, where the sidewalk design was going to land, and so we have another recommendation from our city engineer. We also received public comment at that meeting regarding the crosswalk design. So our city engineer listened to that public comment and made a recommendation that is specific to what he thinks would be the safest option relative to the, the comments from not only the public, but also from board members during the sidewalk. So tried to take all of that and put that into a design that would be appropriate for the area and for the proposal. This information was also sent to Diane Morabito, who peer reviewed it on behalf of the city. So that information is available in the meeting packet. That's really the biggest items at this point. However, it is my recommendation that you speak, the board speak with the applicant about extending the timeline to make a decision on this preliminary application and give the applicant the time to make adjustments to the sidewalk design after you've spoken about that with the applicant so that we're sure that it's correctly on, reflected on the plan before the board is entering deliberations. However, just to cover everything, we did provide a set of draft findings of fact and draft conditions of approval in case the board does not agree. Thank you.
Thank you, Emily. Board members, any immediate questions or thoughts, or maybe we jump right into that recommendation on that sidewalk sketch and at least start discussion there and.
I think we should jump right into the sidewalk detail.
I'd like to hear from the applicant because he's at the podium, ready to go.
Well, that was, that was going to be my next, my next thought was, let's jump right in and.
Thank you.
Awesome, thank you.
Good evening, my name is Austin Fagan, I'm with BH2M Engineers, representing the applicant, Diversicare Development. So to summarize Emily's summary, the last time we were at the meeting on August 15th, there were a few remaining items that the board was looking for. First was a letter from IFNW and Main Natural Areas Program stating whether or not they had any concerns with the project. We have received a letter from the Main Natural Areas Program stating that they have no direct concerns. There are no known protected plants or anything on site. IFNW has acknowledged our request for information. They have said that they typically take around 30 days to respond, but with their workload, they'll get to it, more or less. So we're, we're waiting on that one. The second item that the board was looking for were signed letters from the owners of 50 and 52 Jenkins Road stating that they are agreeable to put their driveways off of the proposed roads, Amari and Dupie, which they have sent in signed documentation for that. The main concern, as Emily stated, was the DPW review of the sidewalk. The applicant at this time is still interested in proposing the sidewalk based on the, all right, actually, let me, let me read right from this. The DPW was looking for, to review the sidewalk as it was designed at the meeting prior to August 15th meeting. Since that time, the city's engineer has requested the applicant install a sidewalk with a five-foot esplanade along the western side of Jenkins Road with a mid-block crosswalk approximately 30 feet north of the Amari and Jenkins intersection. The applicant is proposing the sidewalk stay within the city, the proposed city easement along the eastern boundary of lots 17 through 25 as that was requested by the city engineer's memo in May, on May 24th of 2023. The applicant also continues to propose that the sidewalk and crosswalk be constructed as discussed at the sidewalk and the August 15th meeting, with the exception that they are willing to install the flashing beacon that was recommended by the board, by the public and by the city engineer and their third-party review engineer. Let's see, the, the main reason for wanting the sidewalk to go along the cross-country rather than along Jenkins Road is there was another comment of possibly directionally boring the water service that'll be extended along Jenkins Road in order to reduce traffic impacts. The applicant's agreeable to that as long as it's financially feasible. They don't believe that it's necessarily part of the ordinance that they have to do that, but they are agreeable if it financially makes sense in comparison to, to digging it up. But realistically, they meet the ordinance by proposing the cross-country. The board's preference was to have the sidewalk head towards the school where people will most likely be walking towards and the cross-country sidewalk will also really only benefit this subdivision. Nobody is going to be using a sidewalk out front of this subdivision where there's no existing infrastructure on that side of the road. All of the existing infrastructure is already on the opposite, opposite side of Jenkins Road where we are proposing a crosswalk to. So we're looking for board discussion on how to move forward with the subdivision, or the sidewalk design, excuse me. We're hoping for a preliminary approval tonight based on meeting the design requirements of the ordinance. We understand that there are, it's more of a stalemate with opinions on where things should go, but we look for direction on that tonight. Yeah, if anybody has any questions or comments, we would, I'd be happy to answer them at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Board members, Rob?
Yeah, so what I understand from looking at this document, with the, with the changes in red, you're going to get rid of the, the interior sidewalk that went north-south and put it on the exterior along. and put it on the exterior along Jenkins Road? What's the reason for the crosswalk thirty feet north of the intersection versus the actual intersection?
I I don't have an answer for you on that.
Okay, that was Joe's suggestion?
Yeah, preference of the city's engineer.
And then with regards to the, um, the beacon, that's one of those ones you press the button and then you get the L E D like we have on Main Street here as an example?
Correct.
Which nobody pays attention to, but, sorry, they don't, apparently today I learned that forty-five million people drive by school buses with the stop arm out too, so, go figure there. Um, okay, and then... Because you had originally, and so your suggestion is you don't want that sidewalk with the esplanade, you'd prefer it on the interior?
Correct. So, um, as I said, with the directional boring, the...
Sorry.
The the intent of that was to reduce traffic impacts and time of delays. If we are proposing a five-foot esplanade and a five-foot sidewalk along Jenkins Road, along the frontage, there's gonna be, you know, multiple times where there's utility poles on that side of the road that are need, gonna need to be replaced and and moved to the other side of the roadway. Uh, there's gonna have to be, you know, filling, which will be a a separate time. Then there's gonna have to be paving, which is gonna be a separate time. So there's gonna be multiple occasions where that, or Jenkins Road is gonna be partially closed to traffic when we are proposing something that will still serve this subdivision, um, with much less impact to traffic and existing infrastructure.
All right, I didn't do the sidewalk, so I don't know what along that side. So there's power lines running down that side of Jenkins Road?
Yes.
Currently, and not, and not on the other side?
Uh, there there are on both sides, but in the area where the markup is shown, there's, there are at least two telephone poles that'll have to be relocated.
Right. And there's no, is there a connectivity of sidewalk north and south of this? Again, I apologize for not having been on the sidewalk, but if you go north on this Jenkins Road proposed sidewalk, is there something that it attaches to, or is it just connecting this little neighborhood?
Uh, there is no existing infrastructure north of the project. Um, the internal sidewalk was meant for just this to cross. Uh, originally, we had proposed no connecting sidewalk. Uh, as I said, on May twenty, the memo from May twenty-fourth, uh, city engineer recommended connecting, so we did. He also recommended extending the sidewalk north, uh, from Dupie Drive to Sullivan. When we were at the sidewalk, I was determined that nobody's gonna be walking, nobody's gonna take the time to walk from Dupie to Sullivan to use a crosswalk. They're just gonna cross the street anyways.
Correct, yeah. He had, so he had suggested go north to Sullivan to get across the street, then go south on Jenkins, which, yeah, I wouldn't do that either. Um, so what you're suggest, so therefore no sidewalk is north. The sidewalk runs down the east side of Jenkins, and what we're trying to do is figure out how do we connect this neighborhood to Jenkins Road?
Correct.
Uh, to the sidewalk on the, on the east side.
Correct.
And I wish we had Joe here to tell us why he wants it on Jenkins versus if I was connecting in the neighborhood personally, I'd probably wanna walk on a quieter spot than right on Jenkins, Jenkins Road. Um, and then you could certainly do some form of a, again, I'm not sure why the crosswalk needs to be thirty feet north of that. Usually, from what my past experiences with Joe, it was always, we want it at an intersection, not mid-intersection, and that's just a visual, because people see a street and they slow down. Well, or they think about maybe slowing down. So... Yeah, I guess my, I mean, the be- beacons will do something. I'm not sure how effective, but that's to be proven later. Um, but as far as the crosswalks, for me, thirty foot north, I'm not sure why. And I think that, um, with the exception of these two, there's lots in the front, walking down the middle and the back is probably a safer and quieter way to go. And since they don't connect until they get down to this crosswalk and go across the street, I'm not sure what the difference would be.
Mr. Chair, I think I agree with Rob's, uh, thinking. A cross-country sidewalk makes more sense to me than having one built alongside the road. And then having a crosswalk with an R F B to get from one side of the street to the other.
Yeah, if it has to be thirty feet north, I'm sure we can, we can build a sidewalk thirty feet from that corner, because you have an internal sidewalk within this development.
Yes.
We're connecting it where these crosses are. Once you get to the street, if you have to swing north thirty feet, you'll swing north thirty feet. But again, I don't, I'm not sure why specifically it had to be thirty foot north, but I'm not a city engineer.
I guess we should include that in our recommendation and that you put thirty feet of sidewalk on Jenkins Road to connect to the su, to the crosswalk. Maybe it's the slope of the, I mean, you're coming up a hill there?
Uh, it's all relatively flat and consistent throughout that area. But if that's what the board determines...
Yeah, I'd rather do that than, um, move a bunch, a couple telephone poles and create more partial closures on Jenkins Road, which is one of the more popular subjects recently.
I think the thing is too, I think this is a, I mean, that, the sidewalk along Jenkins Road is kind of the definition of a sidewalk to nowhere, because there's already a sidewalk on the other side of Jenkins Road. It's pretty unlikely that there's gonna be sidewalks on both sides.
Agreed.
In the, in the foreseeable future. Happy about the beacon, though.
Absolutely.
That's important considering this, the actual and essentially, uh, what's the word I'm looking for? The actual speed limit as opposed to what people are really, how fast people are really traveling in that area. You've got to get their attention.
Thank you. So to clarify, the recommendation so far would be to keep the cross-country sidewalk, but instead of extending south and crossing at the intersection with Davis and Jenkins, to extend thirty feet north and cross Jenkins at the mid-block as shown on the markups.
I don't know if thirty feet is a, is a magic number.
Yeah, I mean, there's a reason he said that.
Yep.
I'd like to know the reason.
So, so would I.
But, um, if there's some specific, you know, magical traffic and reason that I'm unaware of, then so be it. Thirty feet.
Sight distance is the only thing that comes to my mind, but I think sight distance, there isn't no issue with sight distance on the whole project.
I agree. Thank you.
Yeah, I'd just as soon have the sidewalk at Amari. Makes more sense to me, but if if Joe has his reasons.
Does it make any sense to have two crosswalks that cross Jenkins?
Phew.
Are you saying in the, um, the area of the, the cross-country and then, once again?
I think that would be a lot of confusion and having two that close would be a problem.
But you've already said people are gonna cross regardless of what's there.
Well, I think that, I think that certainly in this case, we're not walking north, you know, a, another block or two to get to the other side to go south. You're just going thirty feet and you got a, a blinking beacon there, and I'm thinking that most parents would train their kids to do that. Uh, it makes sense, but again, I would ask, ask Joe why specifically it had to be thirty foot north of that versus right at where the sidewalk would connect and go directly across. Just my question. It may be something to do with the turning off of that street. I'm not sure. So I would say my suggestion would be do the cross-country sidewalk. If required, thirty feet north, do the crosswalk with the, the, the blinking beacon there, or could he, could it go directly off of that street across instead of going up thirty feet? I, I'm not worried about thirty feet of concrete as much as just why, why does it need to be there versus not? I'm done.
Thank you.
That's my consensus also.
Okay.
Thank you. Matt, Jeff, additional thoughts?
I'd like to hear from Joe directly. That's my only thing. On this, I mean, I know we put notes here and, but I don't know.
Can we, can we phone a friend?
Yeah.
Sure, um, well, let, let's just say, I guess, the, wha, what are your thoughts on the additional crosswalk, you know, just as, as presented by the applicant versus these adjustments that Joe's recommend, recommending with, with only with what's presented.
I was fine with the original, what was originally presented on the inside, the sidewalk on the inside there.
Sure.
So I'm, I'm not sure why we're doing all this, why this was all brought up. So that's why I wanted to hear from him directly. I wish I could hear from him directly.
Jeff, any thoughts?
Nothing substantial.
Okay.
It just looks, to me, it looks silly if you have a sidewalk to nowhere on the outside like that, you know? It's kinda, this seems... Why put it there if you're not gonna extend it?
Mr. Chair?
On the outside, that is.
I'm hearing that we want to hear from Joe directly. I can at least tell you what, what I spoke about with Joe. He went back, listened to the recording from the last meeting, and looked back at the field conditions and our ordinance, and that's what the recommendation, this is how he came out, and this would include, his recommendation is, is asking for curb drainage, five-foot wide esplanade, esplanade and five-foot wide sidewalk. So it's a little bit more than what we're gonna get on the interior, where on the sidewalk that he's, has here is eliminating. As far as the thirty feet, I can ask him directly, but I believe it has to do with cars approaching and slowing down and being able to see where things are and turning, and there's several factors that he considered, I think, when recommending that. And this proposal was, uh, like I said, Diane's memo is in here as well. You can take a look at that if that helps you at all. I'll pull that up.
Yeah, thank you. I, I saw Diane's notes in there in agreement. I, I guess without having the additional discussion, I'm, I'm cu, I'm curious, and and I have to admit, it's a little bit confusing. Um, her note says that she agrees with the recommendation. She likes eliminating the crosswalks so close to Jenkins Road, but these, these crosswalks are closer to Jenkins Road, so I'm, I'm confused about that part. I'm not sure if the observation or the recommendation is crosswalks closer to Jenkins or, or not. They're close to Jenkins here, but it doesn't, um, her comments are just, don't seem to agree, so...
If, if I may, I, I have some input on that.
Sure.
I think what she was saying with the elimination of two crosswalks so close to Jenkins is what Joe's proposal would be is if there's a cross-country, which was brought up, you have to cross from the cross-country to the other side of Jenkins Road, go down to the intersection of Amari and Jenkins, cross back over, go thirty feet north, and then cross. So there's two crosswalks within a short distance at the beginning of Amari Court, if it were to have the cross-country and entering nor, or and, and having the crosswalk north of Amari Court. I may have confused everybody more.
That's, I'm more... I mean, there's only, your original proposal only had one crosswalk across Jenkins.
Correct. And I think that she, her comments are based on Joe's markups. So if we were to have a cross-country sidewalk that went from the Dupie Drive to Amari, the proposed sidewalk along Amari Court is then on the southern side of Amari Court. So you would be crossing across Amari Court from north to south, walking from west to east to get to Jenkins Road, and then with Joe's proposed crosswalk, thirty feet north of Amari Court, you would then be crossing back over Amari to get to the crosswalk across Jenkins Road. I can go point at the screen if... Yeah.
Would you please? Thank you. Okay, thank you. That adds some clarity. That seems strange to do that.
Agreed.
So... I guess, so... If there were... Okay, yeah, um, we're not here to design it. We're not here to design it. Um... Well, I, I feel the, the original proposal, I, I'm not sure the new, I, I'm not, I'm not seeing the benefit yet of, of the proposal in red, um, some of Joe's edits. I'm not... It seems, if he's, if he feels one's cumbersome, I feel like the adjustment in red is equally as cumbersome.
Did Emily say though, that his, the idea here is that you can get more from the drainage and the, right, I heard that correctly, right, that's...
Yeah, the idea here is that we're getting a full sidewalk that multiple people who are not just internal to this development will use. I think that was some, was part of it. Um, but we can certainly ask Diane Morabito to come out at our next meeting if we had any, if we wanted to talk specifically with her about her peer review of Joe's review, and we can ask Joe any questions, have him follow up with us.
Could we have Joe come to the next meeting?
Um, I don't, I don't know. Joe is not usually going to evening meetings.
Okay.
But we can ask any questions. Like, I know you had the thirty-foot question.
Can he do a pre-recorded message?
Do a Zoom?
A pre-recorded video, answering our questions, so we feel like he's here?
We can try to work, work out answers to the questions.
Can we table this to the next meeting then? Have more information.
Now, where this is the, I know we covered this the last meeting, but where this is the only outstanding topic, is there any way to get a preliminary approval? And final approval would be contingent upon figuring this sidewalk issue out, because the vast majority of the design aspects have been completed. Um, there's one sticking issue with a sidewalk. Uh, the, like I said, the meat and potatoes is really there for, for this subdivision design other than a, a sidewalk and a crosswalk.
Yeah, I mean, I would think that a preliminary approval would be reasonable with the idea that ultimately there will be a design of a sidewalk, either internal or external. I mean, I think that. I don't know, Emily. Is that out of line?
Well, we're also waiting for the main I F N W letter, and I would like to try to get things figured out on preliminary approval, so we're not questioning what we're supposed to be getting, because our final review standards really want it like a final plan in front of you. So I would like to know what the board's direction is on the sidewalk question. If it's to go back to the original plan and ask Joe questions, we can do that, but we should have some...
Yeah, I, I mean, I don't wanna question Joe's skills and his understanding of sidewalk design that we don't really know, but just from a, a commoner's viewpoint, it kinda looks like what we saw originally makes sense. Um, you know, thirty foot north or sixty foot south. You know, 30-foot north or 60-foot south. I'm not sure the difference. I understand also that we want to try to have sidewalks when we get them, but at the same time, we don't want to be in the business of asking sidewalks to go to nothing because to the north, there's no sidewalk, and south, there's no sidewalk. At this time, will it be developed down the road? I don't know. I mean, the main thing is we're just trying to get kids to safely cross the walk to get across to Jenkins and then go south towards the school. So, but beyond that, are we, we're good on everything else, you said? Or are we waiting for a letter? What's the letter we're waiting for?
IF&amp;W?
Yes.
And in terms of IF&amp;W, it is part of the ordinance that we need that letter. They have responded saying that they'll get to it. And realistically, IF&amp;W comments, as I said, they're part of the ordinance, but they're not a regulatory agency. They really have no jurisdiction over making decisions for the project. I do agree that it's important to take their, it's warranted to take their information and plan safely around it. But at the end of the day, there realistically will most likely be no changes based on their findings. We provided an IF&amp;W map that they utilized for their research, and it shows no protected natural resources or animals within the area. But that's the board's discretion as well. And Emily's?
Mr. Chair, I would be in favor of reviewing for preliminary approval.
Okay, thank you, Glenn.
With the understanding there's two items still missing. IF&amp;W is not a critical report for that section of land.
And that could be a condition...
Right.
...of approval. I'm sorry, Emily, I didn't memorize the conditions. Is that particular item a condition of approval?
The ordinance requires it. It's not necessarily a condition of approval.
I guess my, I guess, Emily, would that, do you feel that is necessary as a, to include that as a condition?
If this is the board's direction, then it would, I would recommend you add it as condition of approval number four to your draft list that you have in front of you.
Okay.
I just, I'm not 100% clear on what I'm asking the applicant to return to for final review or return with for final review.
As far as the sidewalk goes.
As far as the sidewalk.
Sure. And that? As it, so that was going to be my next question, is as it stands now, Joe has provided this recommendation in red. Is he seeing this as... Does he sees this as a requirement, as a necessary and outstanding item that this shall be adjusted? Or is this, is he understanding that this is, or is his intent that this is a recommendation from his office?
So this is a recommendation, but keep in mind that unlike other subdivisions where we're looking at private infrastructure recently, we are looking at public infrastructure. So this is something that the Public Works Department is going to be asked to maintain in the future. So if this sidewalk is going to be a public improvement, then I want to make sure that everyone is all set and I know what I'm bringing back to the board or helping the applicant bring back because otherwise there'll just be a lot of questions at my desk.
I understand, yeah, that's why I'm asking. So... So we have the IF&amp;W letter. That's for all intents and purposes forthcoming, right? So...
Mr. Chair?
Sure.
I guess if we're going to give preliminary approval tonight, I'd rather see us go with the city engineer's recommendation. And if we're not going to do that, then let's table it until we can get further information from him. But if we're going to go ahead with preliminary approval, I think we should go ahead with the city engineer's recommendation.
Understood. Thank you. That's, I guess I'm beating around the bush on it. That's sort of what I'm gearing up for, Emily, here. So we have, we have the, your note in here regarding the timeline. So to understand the timeline from the 30 days, the public hearing is closed. We have, we've had a sidewalk. And we have additional comments here from the city engineer. We have as a board, understand the two options, per se. If either option was presented, well, we had the original option. We had the recommendation from the city engineer. If that were the only option we had seen, would we say we wanted an interior sidewalk? For example. I guess my, I guess where I'm going with this is it's unresolved. We want to see resolution. We need to provide direction. If we're looking for, you know, as a board, to get a better understanding as to what we're going to see here, how does that impact the 30 days? So quite simply, if we say to the applicant, meet with the city engineer, resolve this further than some red marks, how does that, does that become in conflict with the 30 days? How does that, how does that work? I mean, there's, there's an item here. It's unresolved. It's really sort of outside of the control of the board. I mean, we've closed the public hearing. This has come up after. I mean, how does, how does all that come into play?
So the 30-day window starts when the public hearing closes, is my understanding. August 15th was when we closed that hearing. So then September 15th would put us at that 30-day period. Our meeting, our next meeting is September 19th. This item could certainly go on the September 19th agenda. In the interim, we could review these items with the city engineer again, bring the questions from this meeting recording forward and make sure that we have good question, you know, good answers to the questions. And/or if there's still outstanding items, either have Joe or Diane, ask either Joe or Diane to attend the meeting on September 19th so we can get resolution and make sure we're all on the same page. It's just a matter of, if the, if the board wants to go in that direction, it's a matter of asking the applicant for a four-day extension. If the board wants to do preliminary approval tonight, that is something the board can do also. We would just have to work on adding a few more conditions of approval.
Understood. And then the preliminary approval, we would be clear whether we're looking for the original sidewalk design, quite simply, or the city engineer's recommendation. I guess I'm not, not to overly complicate it, but there really shouldn't be, I guess in my opinion, any derivation between the two. It's one or the other. If it's anything in between complicates it. So... I guess, just a question hypothetically. If we say we want to see the original and we provide a preliminary approval recommendation on the original, is there an occasion that the city engineer could say as part of final, I want to see it changed and I want to see this red mark? And we could come back and we could see an entirely different sidewalk design? Is that...
I think along Jeff's lines, we either have to say we're going to approve, preliminary approval with the city engineer's suggestions, or the applicant gives us the four days to get to the next meeting to then ask for more information, right? If, I mean, I don't think we want to give preliminary approval and then say, but we'd like to talk to Joe or you guys work it out later because that's not, that's not the right position.
I agree.
We either need to say, we're going to do it, we're going to do it Joe's way tonight, and you're approved, preliminary approval. Or applicant, please give us four more days. Sorry, the calendar just didn't work out the way it should have, but four more days to get Joe's opinion so we can make some judgment at that point.
Yes. That's right. Yeah, that is exactly what I'm trying to get to.
Okay.
You just said it more eloquently.
So...
So I guess...
So I guess the question would be first to the applicant, do you want to give us four more days with regards to the 30-day when, after the closing of the public hearing? And if he says no, then you go with Joe's opinion and say you got preliminary approval.
I think that, I agree, that could be step one, so...
I would prefer at this point, yeah, I mean, there's the two options, right?
An additional four days to just work on it with Joe, iron it out?
No, no, I would rather go, because we have the two options, right? I mean, obviously, the second one, Joe's, Joe is a recommendation, so the board can vote on whichever one they want. I'd rather vote on either or myself and get a preliminary approval tonight.
Okay.
You know, it's, because there's only two options. It's not going to go back to anything else. So if we could do that, I'd prefer to do that.
Okay.
I mean, I, you know, when you look at the two, Joe's really doesn't make sense to me. The sidewalk is going to go to nowheres. It is a recommendation, but I'm okay with either or. So if we vote on either and go with, you say, hey, let's do this one, I'll give you preliminary, I'd rather do that if you guys are okay with that.
Okay. So there we go. We have input from, from the applicant. Okay. So Emily, going back to the conditions real quick, you recommend the IF&amp;W. If we want to move forward with a preliminary approval, to add that as item four?
Yes.
And then if the board wishes to continue with the sidewalk as presented, there's, it's not necessary to make any additional conditions? Or do we want to still add a condition? Well, I guess that would, there would be no condition, no additional condition?
If, I think the condition overall is going to be that sidewalk design still remains outstanding. Because I don't, I don't know that I've heard from the board that we have consensus on the design because we're waiting to hear from comments from Joe. So I think there's going to have to be a condition on final sidewalk design, whatever that winds up being.
For me personally, I think if he made the recommendations, he's a professional. He's the engineer. He knows what he's doing. I would go with his recommendations and vote on it that way. There's a reason. He put that there for a reason.
Right, so you're saying preliminary approval...
Based on Joe's design.
Based on Joe's design.
Yeah, I don't think we need to play with it anymore. I think...
And then a condition would be the IF&amp;W letter?
Where I'm at at this point, I would say.
And then he's good to go.
Condition approval with Joe's designs because there's drainage involved. I saw the curb cuts or the curb and the drainage...
Yep.
...statement, so there's a reason, right? He's...
That's fine.
He's not just doing willy-nilly, saying, oh, I want to do this.
It's probably because the city's going to end up having to maintain this infrastructure.
Understood.
Is that a motion?
I just like, I just like to rant. I'm not good with emotions.
I think Matt just made a motion.
I think that was good enough. I'll second that.
All right. So do we move to give preliminary approval with the, including Joe Laverrier's, the city engineer's design for sidewalk? And the IF&amp;W letter is a condition number four, correct? Is that close? It's not as good as Joyce would do, but it's close. Do it, Joyce, if you wanted...
No, you did fine. I'll second that.
Okay. Motion made by Rob and seconded by Joyce to approve the application for preliminary subdivision approval with condition number four for the applicant to provide or present a letter from IF&amp;W as discussed and provide a sidewalk design.
For a city engineer.
Further recommendations, the city engineer.
We good?
Dated. Is there a specific date on that?
Yeah.
August 28th.
So redesigned sidewalk to comply with city engineer's recommended sidewalk design and memo, in memo dated from the meeting packet, which we'll pull up now. The board should also walk through the findings and make sure that they're in agreement on each one of the findings like we've done in the past on other applications.
Should we do that? We should do that before we...
Probably.
Do the...
Yes.
...vote on...
Yes.
...preliminary approval.
So that is on page four of our packet.
But we have Rob's motion. And I'll withdraw my second.
Thank you. So preliminary subdivision review findings of fact are found on page four, starting with section 188-603A pollution.
Mr. Chair, I move to adopt the draft findings of fact, which are found starting on page three of our packet.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Joyce, for the motion, and Jeff for the second to adopt the findings of fact, draft findings of fact, beginning with page three of our document. Any additional discussion or edits?
I just need to comment that I'm happy to see that the daily trip counts are included in the Diane, the memo for the traffic. And I do have questions on the traffic impact fee, how that was calculated. But I don't know if we can answer that tonight, so I'll, I'll say that for the record.
Okay, thank you, Matt. Motion made and seconded. Those in favor, Matt?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Joyce?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Glenn?
Yes.
I would vote yes as well. The vote is unanimous to adopt the findings of facts as presented.
So, Mr. Chair, I move to add as conditional approval number, draft condition of approval number four, that the applicant shall provide a satisfactory letter from IF&amp;W.
Thank you for the motion on that additional condition, Joyce.
Second.
Rob with the second, thank you. Those in favor, Matt?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Joyce?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Glenn?
Yes.
I would vote yes as well.
Unanimous to adopt condition number four as presented by Joyce.
So, Mr. Chair, I move to adopt the draft conditions of approval as amended.
Second.
Thank you for the motion, Joyce, the second by Matt. Additional discussion? Those in favor, Matt?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Joyce?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Glenn?
Yes.
I vote yes as well.
Board finds that appropriate.
Go ahead.
I don't remember what your motion said.
Well, I guess the, the motion was to provide preliminary approval with the, well, with the additional amendment that you added for number four for this, but including the city engineer's design for sidewalks and crosswalks.
Second.
Thank you for the motion, Rob, and second by Joyce. So the motion to provide preliminary subdivision approval with the sidewalk design as presented and recommended by the city engineer. Those in favor, Matt?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Joyce?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Glenn?
Yes.
I would vote yes as well. Votes five zero to approve preliminary subdivision approval as discussed. Is there anything else, Emily, that we've missed or would like to add?
No, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all for your time.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Our next item on the agenda this evening is the planning board standard operating procedures.
So I'm going to ask the board if we can table this and finalize it at the next meeting. I have a couple of items that I just want to discuss with the board, and I just did not get a chance to put them together for this meeting. So if it's okay, we can talk about this on September nineteenth and finalize it.
I'm good.
I do have planning department updates, though.
Yeah, we cut you off last meeting, didn't we? To the late time. Emily didn't get to talk.
Oh, I should pull up what was on my previous list then.
All right, so our final item, after tabling the standard operating procedures to a later date, we'll have city planner discussions and updates.
So I'll just, I'll present what I have for tonight. We have several site plan review applications that we're reviewing in-house. We will, we are sending notices out in compliance with the ordinance standards to make sure that the public is aware for those people who live within the notification radius. A couple of them are private roads and a site plan amendment for BSOOB transit, and we have a couple that we're anticipating to receive as well. So I'll give a full update on that on September nineteenth. For pre-con meetings, this past week, we had the National Guard facility, the next pre-con meeting, so they're moving forward on that project off Eastview Parkway. We also did nine fifty-five Portland Roads pre-con meeting, so they'll be under construction relatively soon. We launched the climate survey for the Climate Adaptation and Action Plan, so please go on our website and take it. It's sacomaine.org forward slash climate. Shannon has, that climate survey and the climate plan is a grant-funded project. Shannon in our office, the assistant planner, has also won a grant for a Historic Preservation Commission project. I don't know if I shared this with the board previously, to add down historic walking tour in downtown. So she is seeking stories of Saco's historic character and historic, basically seeking stories of Saco's history. So if you have any stories, please send them along. There's a video online about how to submit them and about the project in general. Please share that with anyone that might have some stories. And then we're working on housekeeping ordinance amendments in the planning department. Some things that are really important like cross-referencing ordinance definitions and, and where things moved when the two thousand twenty-one ordinance revision process happened. And when I say where things moved is some of the uses got combined, so, but the definitions remained. So there's just things like that to, to help clarify some sections of the ordinance. So we're working on those. We'll bring those forward relatively soon. And we also received the Ecology School Monitoring Third Quarter Report, which I'm just going to put up on the screen. Certainly happy to share it as a, either hard copy or send it out as email to the board. But when we spoke at, I believe it was either June, June or July, it was probably July eighteenth that we spoke about how the board wanted to receive these ongoing traffic monitoring reports for the Ecology School. And the discussion there was that if they are in compliance, then we would want to see them during my planning department updates. And if they're not in compliance, then we would ask the applicant to return to the board as a workshop to discuss options.
So your presentation this evening means it was in compliance?
Uh, yes. Here we'll see that she, Diane provided a summary of arrivals allowable versus the number of arrivals that attended.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question about that? Will these ever stop for the Ecology School, or is this something that's going to continue in perpetuity because, like they're going to have to be monitored, you know, quarterly for the next thirty years?
My understanding was that this was a condition recommended by the Ecology School in the interim before the, the turning lane is built.
Okay. So maybe once that's built, that may be reduced?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, the reporting stops once the left turn lane is installed.
Okay, thank you.
And I'll ask that Lisa just post this on our webpage under this agenda, under this evening's agenda materials so that it's clear that we reviewed this.
Great, thank you. Any other items?
We just have plans for board members to sign. There's many plans over there, so please.
Okay.
Please sign them all.
Great, thank you. All right, it is seven fifty-one PM, and we will adjourn.